Thank you and good evening and welcome to the 20th meeting of fiscal year 2024. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order. We have an opportunity on the agenda for citizens speak. So if there's anyone who would like to speak at this time, we would welcome you to join us. Any hands up in the audience?
Meredith, do you want to introduce the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, of course. Yes, let's. We are fully remote tonight, so let's begin by introducing the members of the planning board. Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagaya, secretary.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
And myself, Meredith Paul, serving as chair. And now introducing our staff, Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Josh?
Josh Eckert Lee, Assistant Director.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Great. Thank you all for joining us this evening. And now again, calling the meeting to order. Let's begin with our item number two, citizens speak. And if there are any attendees who wish to to speak tonight, please raise your hand. And I see two.
Megan Nolan has her hand raised.
Yes, I see two people. Great. And Megan, if you can unmute yourself?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Megan. Welcome.
Okay, great. I'll keep this brief. Dear Planning Board, appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of MBT Communities Act. I want to bring up three points, so I'll be really brief because I know you guys are super busy.
But I. Megan, if you could just state your your address for the record also.
Oh, apology. 1330 Canton Avenue, town meeting member, Precinct 5.
Great. Thanks, Megan. Go ahead.
So the MBT Communities Act promotes zoning for multifamily homes. A vote for yes on February 13th is an opportunity to align with our vision and contributing to more accessible and inclusive community. I'm going to quote the Attorney General letter to the Select Board about limited housing supply is a significant impediment to the economic growth that is needed to keep our community strong, and we all share responsibility for addressing this crisis. So a vote yes on February 13th is critical for Milton to comply with the law and retain local control. And it's an opportunity to shape Milton's future positively, ensuring accessibility, affordability, sustainability for generations to come. I urge each of you to participate in shaping Milton's future by casting your yes vote on question one on February 13th. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan. And there was one other hand up. Hannah? Karen, I'm sorry, Karen Friedman-Hanna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, yes, my name's Karen Friedman-Hanna. I live at 3 Norway Road. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2. And I too am hoping that after the planning board has read the letter from the Attorney General that you are considering supporting this, not working against it. I just still can't understand how anybody in the town, especially elected officials in the town, are potentially suggesting that we continue to go against the law. And I strongly feel that this can be worked with once the town now votes for it, if the town votes for it. And with your support, I think there would be a better chance of them voting for it after it was voted for by a two to one margin in town meeting. I think that the idea that we're still having to to consider going against what Governor Healy is stating is absolutely going to be enforced, especially after seeing the letter that was posted that the previous caller referenced. But I'm going to reference a different part of it that says, and I'm reading it directly. "We ask the town, including its officials, employees, and agents to preserve all records related to the town's consideration of multifamily zoning generally, and the MBTA Communities Act in particular, so that a complete record is available to the Attorney General's office and court if and to the extent that an enforcement action is necessary." And then in closing, the letter from the Attorney General stated, "We are eager to work with the town to meet its legal obligations. Should the town chart a course in contravention to of state law, however, the Attorney General's office will carry out its responsibility to enforce the law without hesitation." I'm really concerned about this, that that, you know, we're going to be used kind of as a poster child for what not to do. And they will, the the state, I think, is making it pretty clear that they will make it a point to go go after us in some way. And I know that several people in town meeting who were against this and some maybe even some members of your committee indicated that, oh, it's not that big a deal. It's only $30,000, $40,000 in funding that wouldn't get done. Well, I'm really curious as to which departments you would be recommending that that money get cut from, since as a town meeting member for 20 plus years, I know how tight funding is for every single department, and every penny counts. And the idea that it's frivolously being looked at, that, oh, only 30, 40, $50,000 isn't anything to worry about, I disagree wholeheartedly. And I think it's your fiduciary responsibility to not let this happen where the town is going to not only be potentially losing various fundings, but also the legal fees that are going to be incurred by doing this, and the $30,000 to $40,000 that the town election is now on the hook for for doing this. So we're not talking little bits of money. In addition, I know that it's also been raised that you might be looking to hire consultants to be looking into some of this. But from what I understand, the town council indicated that if this fails, we can't come back with a zoning article for two years. That's number one. Number two is if the state comes at us saying, you're doing this no matter what, and this is the way you're doing it. Again, if you hire consultants to just be kind of deciding what we think or what you think, it's not what I think, what you think we should be doing instead of this, it could all be for naught and a wasted money again, because we can't do anything for two years. Something else might come up during that time. But also, the state might come in and say, absolutely, you're doing this, and now this is the way you're doing it without having any control over it. So the idea that you're considering spending money to do to hire consultants when there's nothing to really be doing if we fail in this, if if this goes out the window because of a no. So I strongly hope that you will consider getting out there and supporting this and then working to make it be better, which we would have the opportunity to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Josh, are you seeing anyone else at this time?
No.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for speaking. The next, moving on to the next item on the agenda, primarily for those who are watching, tonight is discussion around the MBTA communities. We wanted to dedicate an evening to this discussion. When we last spoke, you know, introducing our first topic, the analysis of MBTA communities zoning districts studies and future potential potential sites. What I thought we could do tonight is sort of look at the criteria that Cheryl has put together, which I think is a real wonderful way to go through, whether we have the opportunity to look at some subtle changes or significant changes to some of the districts. I think what we all felt was really important is that it not be subjective, that we really just have a really sort of a sort of a clear criteria for why we selected the certain districts that we and what we were looking at favorably or unfavorably when evaluating these. So Cheryl, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you in advance, but I thought it might be good. I sent a list of some of the things that I know we had been discussing when we were evaluating the various districts. Would you like to go through? And I don't know, Josh, if you could bring up the criteria and sort of sort of a ranking system that we are that we're proposing, sort of looking through and going through.
Meredith, I think I made that suggestion, I think, two meetings ago before we received the letter from town or the memo from town council and this, the letter from the Attorney General. So to the two speakers' points, I would like to discuss whether we should take a position on the ballot question that's coming up on February 13th. I do think it's important in light of the fact that town council believes that bringing forth, if if no vote happens, that we would be banned from bringing forth substantially the same zoning for two years. And the question of what is substantially the same apparently is not all that clearly defined, nor is there significant or any case law on it. So it does make me worry that we take a large risk without knowing what would be considered substantially different zoning. So it seems to me we would be in a much stronger position if we advocated for a yes vote and then continued to work on how the zoning could be made better or refined without the risk of not being able to change it for two years. In that two years, there's could be a lot of enforcement actions, you know, which is addressed in the Attorney General's letter and also in the letter from HLC. So I do think too, you know, having spent so much time on this and knowing how much time it takes to work on zoning, that it could be something which again is not the best use of our time and our resources if we really can't advance it for two years. So I would like to have that conversation before running through the criteria.
Well, and I and I actually was going to lead in. I I understand that we don't have that on an agenda to take a position on that. I feel like that I would want to have on the agenda and that we would be taking a vote on that. I, you know, we can, I'm happy to discuss tonight, you know, around that idea. My thought was if we went through the criteria, I agree that this is and and I'll let certainly the rest of the planning board speak. But what my understanding is that it may be more of just taking Granite Ave parcels off, you know, things that we would we would like to change rather than, you know, taking a more comprehensive look. And it is very complicated, and I agree, Cheryl, and that's part why I had put on a timeline for creating the zoning. If we are going to create our zoning, I don't think we need to start from scratch. I think there's been a lot of work done. But what I would like to suggest, because really it's out of our control right now, it's out of the Select Board's hands. It really is in the hands of the town. And so I would like personally to let the residents make a decision. But meanwhile, I don't want to lose time where we could be working on, we know we want more of an an inclusionary zoning, so we know we want to increase our affordability. And we can begin working on that. So tonight, I thought we would really focus our attention on the RFP to get that launched, so we could have something for definitely for town meeting, whichever way this whichever way it goes, because I think no one is saying, I have not heard, that we are not wanting to be compliant. We are wanting to work towards compliance, and at least personally, I can I can say that. But I do feel it's really important that we have that inclusionary zoning piece, which I think we could have for a May town meeting. And I also I have been thinking since our last meeting, the other aspect that we could focus on is our site plan approval. And I think that we could include in our discussion this evening, because I think if we had an article which amended our current site plan approval, it would be much better. So if this does go through, which it very well may, the town may vote to support this, we will have improved site plan approval and oversight when these projects come before us. But I think until we have that increased affordability, we have that a really good sense of site plan approval. I agree, we can add design guidelines. We wouldn't have those ready. But and I certainly think if we're going to look at sort of really looking at our our districts more carefully, that 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 will take more time. And so I do want to, you know, be honest about, you know, what we're capable, you know, we still have a lot of other projects before us. This isn't the only thing that we're working on for, I'm sure many of you already know. But we do have a lot of other things that we are that we are tasked with, that we are working simultaneously with. So I would like to be realistic with our time. And I would open it up to the other board members. But I, we don't have that, you know, a decision on whether to support or non-support. So I would look to my fellow board members if we would like to put that on an agenda item, or if we would like to consider spending our time tonight being productive and talking about the RFP so that Tim can get that launched and and our site plan approval. Other members?
So Meredith, if I understand your point about the agenda, the way it's laid out, if you could put it on the agenda for next week's meeting, we don't have to have a lengthy discussion on all the other topics, but if you could put that on the agenda, I think it would be helpful for the public, because, you know, this board took a different position. And there's new information that's come to light since that board took that position. And I think the public ought to know what our position is in light of that new information. And then as far as tonight, on the affordability, I think everyone in town agrees we really would like to look at that. But one of the things that Tim mentioned at our last meeting was that the consultant needs to know the districts and the dimensional standards. So we would need to decide if we want them to proceed with that information that was approved in town meeting as Article 1. If we're going to have something ready for a May town meeting, it would need to be based on what's already been approved, because we wouldn't have any other revisions to that in time. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that, if that's what we're going to talk about. And when you mentioned site plan approval, you're talking about a standalone article. That would that be referred back to from the zoning like other communities have done, right? So they say that the site plan approval is per XYZ section of their zoning?
Correct. So when we've we've actually spoken, Karis North, who is in our town council's office, Tim had been has been speaking with her. She's done a lot of work with MBTA communities. And her focus has really been a lot of towns who had an additional year, they started with their site plan approval process. So they knew that they would be able to enforce, and when a project would come before them, that they could constructively be able to comment on, you know, on the various standards that were put into the site plan approval. And as you know, ours are very general, and that was it was a bit of a challenge when we had 440 Granite come before us, because we weren't sure how far we could take the architecture discussion, how far we could take certain elements of the materials used on the building. So other towns have been focused on that. And I think that's something that if, and I would want to hear from Tim on this discussion, but Tim could talk about typical, you know, what a consulting fee would be and bringing on somebody like Karis to help us with that. Because I think that's something that we could easily have ready as an article from from the planning board, at least, along with our amended zoning for the affordability, inclusionary zoning. So those two aspects, I feel very realistic that we could achieve and are, no matter, you know, what article we end up having, those are two elements that that would be critical pieces that I think I would like to, that we could focus on and and be using our time constructively.
I I support improving our site plan approval process in general, or our requirements that are in our zoning code overall. But I think we should look at what's in this MBTA zoning too. You know, the requirements for MBTA zoning are somewhat unique in that they have the guidelines that we have to follow, right? Whereas site plan review for it's triggered otherwise in the zoning code, they have different requirements. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah. Great. Other members of the board?
Hi, Meredith. So I do support your plan about looking at the site plan approval process and the economic feasibility. However, I do want to just to address the $35,000. I did reach out to Tim about, you know, getting an exact breakdown, and he said that it's that the $35,000 that comes to us approximately every year is actually a moot point, because the budget signed by Governor Healy effectively takes the teeth out of this portion of 3A. And you can read it on the website of the the state website, but basically it says that that provided further that housing authorities and nonprofit organizations situated in municipalities that do not that do not comply with the provisions of Section 3A of Chapter 40A of the general laws shall continue to qualify for funding from the Local Capital Projects Fund. So there is no risk at this point in time of the $35,000 that our local housing authority would get. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Maggie. Others?
So I don't think, Meredith, ma'am, sorry, can I speak?
Yes, please go ahead, Tim.
So I don't think a feasibility analysis is is a waste at all. I think whatever article comes forward at town meeting, people want to see more affordability. We can get it to 15, 17. And this is just the step we have to do to get there. I mean, we can get 10. And I think a lot of people have spoken saying that 10 probably isn't enough, especially when you consider that you know, the three families and I don't know if there's even a four family potential don't contribute to affordability at all. So we have to get higher than 10 units, which means, you know, we're not going to get a ton of affordability. So doing this feasibility analysis, I think it's well worth the money that we're spending. I think if a citizen's petition comes forward, if whatever article comes forward, this feasibility analysis will be used. So I totally agree with you, Meredith, that we really should pursue this, and I think we should get it going soon. So our discussion tonight is prudent. And, you know, having Tim put it out there, if we can do what it takes is really time well spent, in my opinion. Thank you.
Sean, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with Jim. I think I think it's a must to understand how far we can push, you know, the the affordable component. So the feasibility study is necessary. And and I also support investing. I think the outcome is, the outcome is warrants the investment. And the only way that the zoning could have greater than 10% is if we perform feasibility study. So I see it as a must.
All right.
Does everybody see it as a must on the districts and the dimensional standards that were in Article 1? Because that's my understanding, and maybe, Tim, you can confirm this, but that was my takeaway from what you mentioned at our last meeting?
Yes, what I what I think Tim said is that a lot of the work that would be done, they would need to do regardless of what districts. Although when it came down to the final analysis, he said those could be tweaked if there were some changes. Say there was, you know, some slight changes to one of the districts or a couple of the districts, that those it would not be money, because I was concerned about spending money on certain districts that might change, but.
Yeah, so that my understanding, Meredith, the reason for that is that, you know, how many of them would trigger the the affordability requirement to Jim's point, right? Not all of the districts are going to trigger it, depending upon the build out, right? So if it's, if the districts change, and there he is, he can confirm this. Tim, we were just discussing to what extent is it significant that the districts and the dimensional standards are set for the consultant to do this economic feasibility study?
I mean, it's important. You know, they don't need every dimensional parameter. But I think relative to sort of the building type, you know, when you go from, you know, I mean, depending on what type of scheme you're looking at, you go from three units to 10 units to 50 units, to potentially 100 units in a building. The zoning test, I mean, you know, just looking at Article 1, there are a variety of different building types throughout these districts. I think, you know, especially, you know, a good example is East Milton, which has, you know, higher density than the Elliott Street District, but also a really wide variety of parcels. So, you know, you're anywhere from four units to 10 units to 15 units on some of these small parcels. And so you kind of need to know what type of building is going to be built in these districts. And, you know, the location, the parcel size, and sort of the dimensional parameters that you put in, you know, are important. You know, it they're not going to go into, you know, well, if the setback is 10 feet, then, you know, you can do this, and if it's 20 feet, you can do that. But, you know, having a general idea of the location and size of the buildings, which, you know, again, parcel size and broad dimensional parameters have an effect on that.
Great. Thank you, Tim. So I think that's what they would have to start with, Cheryl, to your question. That this would have to be the, which, you know, extra space storage, you know, that's not going to change, you know, the Idiot Wharf, those aren't going to change. The Hendry's site, 36 Central, those are all very predictable. So I would feel that they're fairly, you know, those are not likely to change, which is a significant portion. And then the, you know, I I think, you know, again, without stating what would be changed, because we don't know until we really get into it. But I think it's worth moving forward with with getting some sort of feasibility study that should this pass and continue, that that will have something teed up for May.
And and as I understand it, the first step is to write an RFP. So that's what I think we need to sort of do tonight is to write an RFP or discuss what you go into an RFP, because then that's the first step. So then they know where we're going. They don't need to know at this point in time, you know, the district. So I'd like to just take that first step and, you know, send out an RFP.
So Tim circulated an RFP to us a couple of meetings ago. And then last week, we discussed some additional detail or at least aspects of the analysis that we would like considered. I think Sean made a really good point about asking whether it's feasible to seek a monetary contribution for projects that don't otherwise trigger an affordable unit. Because they're, depending upon how many units would fall into that category, that could be an important feature. And then we talked about some scaling, you know, so whether rental or ownership would be. feature. And then we talked about um some scaling, you know, so whether rental or or ownership would be a different percentage. We talked about, or at least I suggested that we look at AMI. So if a lower area median income could trigger um a lesser percentage because you're getting deeper into that affordability. And then the other thing I think I had suggested was whether a percentage of square footage versus a percentage of units. And I know that's something Boston does, but I don't know if HL how HLC views that. So it was just, uh, and then I I I don't recall, there could have been other things that people asked for to be considered too. But I I do think if if Tim feels comfortable rolling those into the draft RFP that he circulated, uh, I think that would be something I would support.
Right. So my understanding is we've worked with RFPs in the past. You know, and Tim would draft an RFP and then would send it out to us and we would edit it and add it. Where and then then we'd go through it as a group to discuss it. So is this the same, is this how you're envisioning it to work, Meredith?
I am, and I, you know, the question is, and Tim, you can talk about this because you've talked to MAPC, um, who did Newton's. And they uh, they did not need a formal RFP, RFP because they didn't send it out to bid. This is typically if you've decided that you are going to send it out to bid. If we go the route of MAPC, which Tim got a quote, um, which was, you know, reasonable financially. I think we would at least want to give them our directive on what would we what we would be asking, which could be similar to some of the RFPs that that we've seen that have been circulated.
Yeah, I I think, Meredith, one way or the other, um, you know, it's, I I I think you're more kind of interested in like, what is the scope of work? What do we want, what do we want to have studied? I mean, the rest of the stuff that goes into the RFP is, you know, frankly boilerplate. Um, you know, there's not a ton that that you would need to have, you know, a strong opinion on. So, um, you know, if we do decide to go with MAPC, we can contract with them directly. If we want to, you know, play the fields, um, you know, we can put together, you know, that procurement document. Um, you know, which which again is is, you know, a little bit more just kind of legalese. Um, you know, I'd want the board to obviously take a look at whatever the final version was before we sent it out, but but I think irrespective of of whatever the approach is, the scope of work is really the thing that, um, you know, you're you're you you want to have, you know, your hands all over.
Right. And I think, you know, when I was looking through, I think, um, I did like the way Lexington posed it where they said the project team will prepare a written report to answer the question of whether Lexington's inclusionary zoning proposal is financially possible to produce multifamily housing specifically. Can Lexington zoning support fifteen percent inclusionary zoning, inclusionary dwelling units at eighty percent of AMI and still be economically feasible? Can Lexington zoning support up to twenty percent inclusionary dwellings, up to eighty percent? And a project still be economically feasible? And then it goes on to say, to analyze the financial viability of increasing the percentage of affordable units to fif- to fifteen and twenty percent, the project team will undertake pro forma, it says, you know, states what they what what they're asking for. But I think I I like what Cheryl was saying, you know, in talking about, you know, changing, you know, is it sixty percent? You know, they could test different, you know, different levels. But what ultimately Lexington was asking is to amend their zoning to have every unit, eh, and every development eight units or larger to be fifteen percent um affordable. So I I think, I think the question is, what would what would our board like for Tim to, what is our ask, I should say?
Yeah, I agree, um, Meredith, about the eight unit trigger. I think Tim told us that that's what HLC has indicated it'd be the the bottom, sort of the, I guess, the the lowest number of units that they would support as a trigger. So I think that's what we should ask for sure. I would like them to tell us what maximum percentage we can get to, rather than giving them two percentages. You know, fifteen or twenty, what if it's sixteen, what if it's seventeen? I'd like them to tell us what the maximum is. And then they, it might be, let's just say seventeen percent at eighty percent AMI or fifteen percent at some combination of less than eighty percent AMI. Because I I think that would be useful for us to discuss and to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, similar to do a range, you know, say between, you know, ten is the minimum, so we know we can do ten. You know, maybe do thirteen, do a range between thirteen and twenty percent.
Tim, I don't know what your thoughts are on how specific you think we should be or keeping it a little bit more open. I just wouldn't want to see it come in less than fifteen percent and.
Yeah, I mean, if 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 that's what if that's what the numbers say, that's what the numbers are going to say. My my suspicion is that, you know, fifteen percent is probably, you know, and and this is what MAPC said, you know, based on what they've seen from from other communities. You know, we'll wait, we'll wait and see what the results are, but um, I think fifteen percent is something we can probably confidently, you know, predict. I think, you know, again, once you get beyond that, it's, you know, what is the combination of higher affordability versus deeper affordability, you know, like so seventeen percent at hundred percent AMI or, you know, so I I I think, you know, we'll have to figure out a way to to frame that in a way that is sufficiently open ended so that we're not like, you know, if we ask for fifteen percent, but like secretly it could have been seventeen percent, you don't want to leave those on the table. But also, you know, you don't want to send them on a kind of goose chase for a thousand different permutations of, you know, percentage and depth of affordability.
Meredith, I I happen to agree with what Cheryl had said earlier. Don't don't define necessarily a percentage for them to to confirm whether we could or we couldn't, but just ask them to establish the highest percentage we possibly could. And I and I, you know, back to the topic, um, of the smaller developments. Think would like um the consultant to offer us any thoughts or ideas on how we could how we could um have smaller developments be contributors if possible. You know, if it's not possible, then tell us it's not possible. But if it is, identify that it is and and possibly some suggestions on how to utilize them. You know, if 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 article, if Article One passes on the thirteenth, is a substantial number of smaller developments that will, you know, probably more likely to contribute to added units, but there's no mechanism for any affordability. So but I I am for not defining necessarily uh the task. But, you know, outlining where our goals are, what our objective is, and see what they come back with.
All right. So, Tim, would you recommend putting something formal together, even if it's MAPC that we decide that we want to work with?
Yeah, they'll they'll need a specific scope of work from us, and and if the board decides to put out an RFP, it would be the same thing. You know, we'd be asking, you know, a group of consultants to do as well. So, um, you know, like I said, this is going to be the common element of any procurement document, whether it's just a straight negotiation with MAPC or some type of, you know, RFP procurement.
Okay, that's great.
I'm sorry, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Jim, you hadn't spoken yet, but my suggestion quickly was just going to be that based on our discussion tonight, that Tim revised what he had submitted to us before, and we discussed it and finalize it at our meeting next week.
That would be great, Tim. Is that enough time for you to do that?
I um, I I might not be able to get it to you by the end of the day Friday, but definitely by like end of day Monday. Um, you know, so we can, we can definitely put something together for that.
That would be great. And did um, did MAPC give you any indication on how long this this might take? I know I was looking at some of the other deadlines and they've asked, um, some must have town meetings in April that they were asking for it by the end of March.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the, you know, the 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 most super basic package, um, you know, which is just, you know, the the simple state guidelines. You know, they they indicated to me maybe a month. You know, we're we're asking for maybe a little bit more than that, so, um, you know, probably a little bit more time. But, you know, we're also not asking for, you know, a full blown kind of community wide, multi-public meeting process. So, um, this is still relatively a sort of a desktop job for them. So it's just a matter of kind of scheduling it out.
Okay, that would be great if we could.
I just have one to ask, and I don't want to push this thing out more than a month. I think, um, we need it as quick as possible, but kind of to piggyback on Sean's point with the smaller units. Tim, do you think it's too big of an ask to, or does it even affect their analysis? Uh, I'm jumping around here, but one thing I'd like to see is the smaller units, you know, if you develop a three unit uh parcel and you don't need any affordability requirements. We would require the developer to put some money into an account somewhere and and that gets used for affordability in the future.
Affordable housing trust.
Exactly. Yeah. So is it too premature to ask these guys to factor that in at this point? Or, I mean, what do you think?
No, I mean, I I think that's, you know, w- we're do, we're doing the affordable housing analysis. Let's analyze all the things that we would want to, you know, consider. Um, I think that um yeah, I mean, we'll we'll include that in the scope of work as something for them to 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 look at. You know, it is something that other communities have done. One thing that I'll do, and 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 I I talked to City of Newton. Their 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 economic feasibility analysis is actually still ongoing. So they're, you know, similar boat to us. They passed their zoning and then they're going to follow up with an amendment to it, um, you know, based on that. They're expecting that to come out next week, so I'll send that along. But they had also done a few years ago, sort of a a town, you know, kind of what we're doing now on a townwide basis, like we want to establish inclusionary zoning. What, how do we want it to be? What do we want it to be? So I'll send along their page that kind of describes their whole process and everything, and they've got all of that stuff, partial units, deep affordability, all sorts of different tiers. Um, it's it's complex. You know, but it's kind of gives you kind of a a flavor of kind of what the universe of possibilities is. Um, we've kind of talked about a lot of that already, but um, you can kind of see what it looks like in action. But we'll we'll include all of that in a scope and, you know, if you need to add more, add more, take stuff out, take stuff out, we'll um, we'll put it all in there.
No, awesome. It's mentioned Newton, and they were kind of on my list. Is it, and this is a total sidebar, but I read somewhere that if you want to go to twenty five percent affordability, they give you an extra story on certain buildings. And if you want to go to fifty, they give you two stories. Is that true?
I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but that is a as a practice, that's that's a typical kind of thing, um, you know, in terms of a a height or a density bonus for additional affordability. That's getting into terror. I mean, you all tell me, um, you know, I know we've been talking a lot about height and density and everything, and I I kind of assumed there wasn't a lot of appetite to to give more heightened density, but maybe, maybe there is.
There's absolutely not on my end. I just wanted to bring that up to show how creative we can get here. It just seems like we can do almost anything if we, if it's reasonable.
So Jim, we have that in the Milton Village mixed use overlay where um, there's basically, we call it a height bonus, but it's really kind of a allowed square footage bonus for um increased affordability. That's one of the options. But there was also for um historic preservation and for public realm improvement. So um, those that have been like contribution, public realm was most likely contributions into a fund. They haven't been used yet, but it's not something totally alien to Milton, let's say, because we do have it there.
Okay, great, great point. Um, and Tim, I did have a one other, just a follow up question, because this is great. It sounds like we can take a vote that we want to put this forward, um, or at least, Tim, we can be prepared to take a vote on it, maybe even next week. But my question is, if the zoning does pass and we wanted to um to update the zoning with this affordability component, we would need to have an article in place, correct, that this would be an amendment to the zoning? So we would need to, I mean, it would be a very short article, but it would need to be an article amended.
Yeah, there's 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 a section in Article One dealing with affordability that, you know, the mechanism here would be amending that. You know, I know the warrant, I think, I I did close today, I don't know. Um, I I'm I'm sure, you know.
We have a placeholder for an article. It just, you know, um, an MBTA zoning article, so they may, you know, they have, they know that something may be coming from us, um, so this could fall underneath that. So what do we need to sort of get that language um initiated as well?
So, Tim, is that something where we could have, uh, we could, the standard language is to amend that certain section. You could leave it blank on the percentage, and you could fill in something about a contribution. I mean, that could just be the placeholder, right? And then that would get refined. At least it sets it sets the intent of what we're looking to change, right? The percentage and the trigger and the possibility of a contribution on a smaller project. Those are, I think, like the three main things, right?
Yeah, you could probably flesh out the language of an article. You know, again, just kind of based on that scope of work, you know, like this is what we're interested in trying to do. And, you know, if something falls off as a possibility, then it falls out of the article, you know, whatever.
And I would think there's other articles that are, that other communities have put forth to their town, which is um, which has probably been approved by the Attorney General, that those could be um legally acceptable. So I mean, we just, just, I just wanted us to be thinking about that as well, that we may want to have something ready to get to the warrant committee on that and the SLUG board. All right, great. So thank you, Tim. Um, that's exciting to move that, move that piece forward.
Meredith, can I, can I ask a question? The question is to Cheryl, and Cheryl, I was reading through the Boston zoning code for inclusionary um zoning that you sent over to us. And just from a practical, um, I guess, from a practical standpoint, that um potential to have a percentage of square footage as opposed to a percentage of units, right? You had indicated in your notes that there there's a consideration for seventeen percent square footage in lieu of seventeen percent of the units. And then um, the the, the zoning language has a lot of other potentials, but how do you see that? How do you see that? Uh, I'm I'm just trying to think through square footage of a of a development in. Is it more beneficial in your mind to have it based on a ratio of square footage? It just, you know, as I think about what the size of the units might be, it doesn't seem like it is more, but what are your thoughts?
Well, my thought is, um, Tim, I think in in the language of Article One, it says that the units have, the affordable units have to be in um sort of the same percentage of mix as the market rates, right? So let's say the market rates are all one and twos. That means your affordable units will all be one and twos. But if in this scenario of percentage of square footage, maybe you could get a three bed, which would be a larger unit that you don't have elsewhere in the market rate units. That's the thought behind it, Sean. And I know in a uh project that my office was involved in several years ago in Jamaica Plain, that's what got approved. So, so it ended up being one less unit, but the square footage equaled what it would have been if it were three smaller units or or whatever the number of units was. I don't remember the number of units. So it's just something for discussion and consideration, not necessarily saying it's the right thing. I'd be interested to see what Tim's um thoughts are on that too, because he he was in the the BPDA in Boston when inclusionary zoning was probably being discussed, these changes. So, Tim?
Yeah, and and just, I I I wanted to correct something because I I actually just got a follow up email from MAPC, um, just about timeline. I I I had said a month, it's it's actually closer to two or three months, um, you know, for that economic feasibility study. You know, again, the, I I I call it the basic package. I think we're still kind of on the kind of end of the basic package because we're not really doing a lot of, you know, public forums and community meetings and everything like that. But um, they did say two to three months. So this is maybe something that, you know, we'll want to make sure we kind of sew up and get out the door, you know, relatively quickly on that timeline. But to.
Tim, just real quick, before you get to the next point, uh, just because you mentioned that, was it fifteen thousand dollars you said also for the basic?
Yeah, it was, and 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 they kind of, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand as kind of like a range.
Okay.
I don't think we can wait two or three months. Guys, is it possible to put it out to bids to get someone quicker?
I think that might take longer.
It would take longer because, I mean, I I don't know how long some another consultant would take to do it, but if it's similar to that timetable, you're kind of already adding on another couple of weeks on the front end. You know, to to kind of get, you know, a procurement out and responded to. So, you know, at the end of the day, it it, at best, I think it would be a wash. At worst, I think it would, it would take even longer.
Right. So how does that work? We 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 push forward assuming we're going to get fifteen percent or something? I mean, because we can't wait Because we can't wait. Two to three months to start this, right?
We have a Maytown meeting. That would be the goal, to have something ready for the Maytown meeting.
I don't think it was the start time, Jim. It was the complete the work time.
Yeah. It's the duration. It's it's tight, but it's still, it's it's probably the fastest we can have it done and uh.
I think so.
We could probably still work with it.
You know, complete the work time I get, but that's okay. So you complete the work like the. In two to three months. Yeah, okay, if that's what we got, that's what we got. Okay.
And Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have the article, if we have an article ready for. Maytown meeting. Um, the language could read subject to um. It approved economic feasibility study.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I I I think that was um. You know, we we had toyed with with an amendment to that effect um, already, and and that was something that um. We could probably, we could probably still do. Um, so, yeah, I think the answer is yes. Um, and and just to get back to the to the, and I'll be, I'll be really quick. Um, that that is kind of exactly what the thinking was relative to the square footage. Um, it also goes in the other direction, you know, some, this may, this may not be a big deal in Milton, although I think our our units. In multifamily tend to be a little bit bigger than what you see in Boston or other communities. Um, is you could potentially see more units if. The square footage is kind of divvied up into smaller units. If you've got big ones, you know, we we had, you know, a project that. A thousand Boylston Street that had, you know. Five thousand square foot penthouse, you know, condos. Um, that actually wound up being smaller offsite units, and we wound up getting more than thirteen percent. Um, of the requirement of that as that. So it's just a matter of flexibility. Um, you know, in a lot of cases, it winds up being, you know, six of one, half dozen of the other. Um, but but in 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 some cases, you do get a little bit of a marginal benefit.
And just. So, sorry, as a follow up, that, does that have an effect on our forty B count? Is it better to have more smaller as opposed to one larger?
I mean, if that's what you're concerned with, you know, more apps, the absolute number of units is, you know, becomes more important. Um, so if you're going to do, you know, fifteen percent, you'd want fifteen percent of units so that you get the most number of units. Um, you know, there are other housing goals that we have in terms of family housing, in terms of. You know, the types of folks that, you know, we need to see in affordable units and. And and I think, you know, there's, there's a big range there, you know, that you can imagine, you know, an older person or a younger person just starting out being in a smaller unit or. You know, a family that, you know, is going to have to take their kids out of the school district, and and if they can't find affordable housing. They'll need a family sized unit. So um, I I I think that, you know. If if your, if your goal is forty B compliance and getting way up on on the S H I, you'll want. The the greater number of units, um, but we also have other housing goals that, you know, you want to have the flexibility for.
Quick question on forty Bs? Who?
Yes, Jim.
All right, guys. Um. The affordability component of forty Bs, the twenty five percent, is that in perpetuity or do those? Revert back to market rate after thirty years?
So the the way that um, the sort of the duration of the affordability tends to work is. It's kind of determined by the subsidy. So you'll have. Um, you know, for for instance, you know, we have um, we're part of the the federal home program. Um, and so we can get money to kind of subsidize, you know, units, and there's requirements there. Because it's sort of a limited pool of money that goes into a project. The affordability is limited to, I don't know if it's twenty or thirty years. Um, there's other subsidy programs. In a lot of, you know, especially forty B projects. Um, or projects that are through what's called the local initiative program, which is, you know, basically inclusionary units. Because those are effectively internally subsidized by the project itself. The 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 affordability of those units is kind of just baked into the price of the project. So on an ongoing basis. You know, the rent rolls. Support those units, or on an ongoing basis, the ownership unit is affordable because the sales price is limited, you know, by a deed rider. So those tend to be, I, it's not a hundred percent guarantee in every case. But those units tend to be the perpetual units, because. You don't have to go chasing more state and federal money to continue a subsidy for the affordability. The affordability is baked into the finances of the project.
So with our affordability and our MBTA zoning article. How can we assure that it's? In perpetuity and not maxed out after a certain number of years?
Well, I I I I think that's, you know, you can, you you can put that into your um, your regulatory agreement. Um, that you have to engage in with the project, and that's kind of a tripartite kind of agreement with um, with the state. Um, but but again, sort of the 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 financial basis of the affordability is, again, because. You know, you are putting together a pro forma to build a building, and you're assuming I'm going to get market rents. From these ten units, and I'm going to get. Less than market rents from these three units. And, you know, your your pro forma works or doesn't work based on that, and that's why it's important to get these numbers right. Based on the balance of, you know, the unit count on the market end and the affordable end, so that these projects pencil out in the first place. Once they pencil out. You know, the 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 developer of the project is kind of going in with their eyes open, saying like. I am agreeing that these will be perpetual, and I can do that because. You know, look at my pro forma, it works, it works for me, I'm going to do it. Um, you know, this is all very simplified, but that's kind of how it works, where you're not depending on. State or federal money that has different requirements. And, you know, will not kind of sustain you for the lifetime of the building. Um, you know, that's when you start to see some of these, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty year affordability um, requirements. All of the units that we've kind of gotten on our S H I so far from, um, you know, the Hendry's units, they're not on it yet, but they will be soon. Um, but the Woodmere units, um, the Walkout Woods units, those are all through the local initiative program, which is, again, you know. Um, that the program that they they use to kind of get. Inclusionary zoning units onto the S H I. Those are all perpetual units. Um, again, for the exact same reason we just described. Those are ownership for the most part, and so the the way that the mechanism there is. There's a deed rider that says, all right, you purchased this home on an affordable basis. You get a little bit of equity, you know, on a sale, but. Your sales price is limited to, you know, whatever, so that it's affordable to the next person. Um, you know, that's, yeah, again, even more durable than a regulatory agreement, because that's in the deed and that's recorded. So um, I think, again, it's not a hundred percent in every case. It's kind of, you know, you do have to do it on a case by case. But um, it's it's just a favorable. Means of getting that extended affordability, because it's internally subsidized by the project.
So, Tim, I remember a few, a couple of years ago, when we talked about um. Amending the zoning, which allowed for the new building at Winter Valley. That um, their financing was. Coming to, I think, the thirty year end, and those potentially could have come off the S H I. They refinanced that, that they are now still on the S H I. But um, is that typical for the rentals then? You're you're just talking about the condos.
Well, I I again, so so Winter Valley being a one hundred percent affordable project. Um. Is a little bit of a different animal, because that is, that is a project that um, cannot sustain itself on its its own rents. Um, that's just the way a hundred percent affordability works. And so those projects get built with. You know, an ever increasingly elaborate stack of financing. So, you know, there's. Um, you know, you'll get, you know, there there may be a mortgage, and then you'll get, um, you know. Tax credit money from the state, tax credit money from the federal government. Um, you might get home money, you might get other kind of public housing money. Um, all of those have their own restrictions, their own stipulations. Um, and that's kind of where you get into a situation where you're kind of constantly having to chase. Um, you know, that ongoing subsidy, um, you know, what, once you sort of get to that kind of limit of, you know, whether whatever it's thirty years or twenty five or forty years. Um, but that's a function of, those are projects that started off as a hundred percent, every unit is below market rent, every unit needs to be subsidized. With a forty B project or, you know, one of these projects that are inclusionary zoning. There is a substantial market rate component to these projects. Um, so it's, it's just, it's a real, real estate project that kind of sinks or swims based on its own kind of. Economic, you know, fundamentals. Um, it just, it just has that, you know, that expense of, you know, the affordable units are 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 an expense. The same thing as if like, you said, you know, you've got to build your building out of, you know, gold instead of concrete, you know, that would be an expense. Um. I I I think affordable units are worth more than gold. That's why I thought that was an appropriate analogy. Um, but so so that's why when we say internal subsidy, that means the marker rate units are making enough money. In rent. To make up for the fact that the affordable units are not making enough money in rent.
So, Tim, can I just um, and Meredith, may I, and the um. The idea that um. When you have zoning in place. Uh, that allows multifamily. That you could get another mission based um. Developer, so to speak, such as um, Home Inc. Or Home Inc., I think, is the owner of Winter Valley, right?
Um, Milton Residents for the Elderly.
Milton Residents for the Elderly. So um. I see we have a number of attendees, so I think it's worth to, because so many people have been in the. Public been concerned about the affordability. We're not just talking about, and the state's not just concerned about affordability in terms of units on the S H I, right? So the opportunity for um, sort of lowercase, often times called lowercase affordability, meaning. That the um. Uh, they may not be on the S H I, so that's sort of one thing, but also a sort of a mission based. Developer doing a hundred percent affordable units. Can you just touch on that a little bit? How the zoning might be a mechanism for those?
Yeah, I I think that um. You know, it it's, we 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 have a little bit of a history of this in town of Milton, um, you know, because. Um, Fuller Village, Unquity House, Winter Valley, these are not um. Planned unit developments in the same way that's like Walkout Woods is, or um, you know, some other kind of special purpose zoning. You know, those are actually built on zoning districts. So we have an A, B, C. And double A zone. We also have a D zone and an E zone. Um, the D and the E zones are are all of those kind of um, senior housing affordable projects. It's just the way we did it back in the day. Um, you know, MBTA communities would be a different kind of animal in terms of, you know, its general purpose. It's not. Specifically for affordable projects, but when you think about what the costs of in terms of development, you know, materials, labor. Um, land, you know, these are obviously kind of expenses, but the permitting process itself is an expense. You know, you're hiring consultants, you're hiring lawyers. Um, the longer the process goes on, the more you're paying those people. Um, that is a barrier to a lot of development, especially development, which, like I said, you know. Doesn't stand alone on its own kind of economic fundamentals, you know, it's a hundred percent affordable, every unit needs to be subsidized. So the more. Money you have in savings from the length of the permitting process and the complexity of the permitting process. The more kind of opportunity there is for some of these mission based developers to, you know, if they are competitive in terms of purchasing land, you know. And they have a predictable zoning process, you know, there is the potential for that to happen, you know, where, and especially, you know, you know, when it comes to, you know, say, public land. Um, you know, I know some of the ground they have parcels are public land. That's something where there's an opportunity there for. Um. You know, a a a kind of a low cost, you know, land transfer from the state. Um, or if the town has land, you know, we can certainly kind of do, you know, what we want with our own land. Um, you know, if the zoning is in place, you open up the the possibilities to all sorts of different types of developers. Um, you know, rather than having to sort of explicitly kind of like chase them, you know, you can kind of invite them in.
Thanks.
That's great, Tim.
And just to follow up, I know when, because we were talking about Winter Valley, that when we went through that process. They were limited to um, one bedrooms. Um, I think because of their funding was through HUD. So that wouldn't have a problem with our, like. Um, for families in MBTA, or should we not be concerned about that?
So the 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 requirement in the statute is that, you know, the the way that the guidelines interpret is that you can't say, you can't say you can only do one bedrooms, where you can only do three bedrooms. Um, if a project comes in and wants to only do ones or wants to only do threes, they can certainly do that. Um, you know, the same thing with the age restrictions. We can't require an age restriction. But if someone wanted to do age restricted housing, they could absolutely do it.
Thank you.
Good question, Maggie. That's good. Any other questions on the inclusionary zoning that we're discussing this evening? Sean or Jim?
I would just wonder if we should. Not to be redundant, but should we just write it in that? Our units last in perpetuity. Um. This is just a thought for the future, not for, not for the feasibility analysis, actually. We can revisit that. I'm good.
Uh, but that is one question, Tim. I I would we need to um, write into our zoning, the amendment? Um, that the, that the units would be required to be on site? Or is that something we would leave up to that? Developer?
So I I think you could do that. Um. And I think that you should. Um, I, we we've had, you know, a lot of the units that we've done in the past, um, especially the um. The the woodlock drive units and the walkout wood units are offsite units. Um, I know, and I don't want to speak for them currently, but I I know in the past, the Affordable Housing Trust has kind of been a little squishy on those. Um, and and you can imagine, it it's probably less of a problem with the multifamily project, but if you think about, you know, when we permitted Walkout Woods, these are townhouses, but they're really big townhouses. Um, there's no equivalent. Unit in a two family house in Milton to those walkout wood units. So even though we have, you know, the appropriate number, you know, based on a percentage. Um, and they're very nice. I've 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 looked at a bunch of these units that Northland has kind of, you know, done up and and put on the market as affordable. They're they're lovely. But they're not, you know, they're not equivalent to what you're getting if you were to live at Walkout Woods. Um, and so when you have the units be on site. Every unit in the building is the same, and, you know, it's just much easier to kind of keep track of. The other issue with an offsite unit is, you know. You're taking, you know, the the playbook is you go and find a two family house or a three family house or something, you know. In in either East Milton or West Milton or or somewhere. And you buy it, and you sort of make those your affordable units. And it's like, yeah, we got them on our, on our, 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 our inventory now, but those, those units were. Relatively affordable already. Maybe not, you know, it's Milton, so maybe not super affordable. But, you know, to the extent that we have more affordable housing stock, it's in those places. And so. Not, you're not like a hundred percent cannibalizing that type of thing, but like, I think you'd rather see them on site so that, you know, they're new units, they're in the same building, they're benefiting from all the same kind of. Um, you know, amenities that everyone else is benefiting from, and, you know, it's just much cleaner that way. Um, I I think you should be able to do it. Um, we can kind of double check on that.
And also, yeah, sorry, in that vein, um, can we also write in that's a local preference, because we've all talked about having our. Um. Kids wanting to, you know, be able to buy in town, or our parents wanting to downsize. So can we write in that we'd like a local preference in having our workers um, stay in town?
I I so other, other, when we have done like P U Ds, you know, for, um, you know, for for Woodmere, Walkout Woods, one thirty one Elliot Street. Um, I think we have, we have written into the zoning that, you know, we want to avail ourselves of the. I I mean, the way the local preference works is it's kind of in the, it's it's in the forty B regulations. Um, which kind of governs the program. And and that becomes, you know, a process by which you sort of kind of apply to D H C D or H L C at this point and say, you know, we want, you know, I think the maximum seventy percent local preference, and. Here's why we think that that's appropriate. Um, so the zoning can be as simple as, you know. We'll be, we'll be requesting the maximum possible, you know, local preference. But the the way that's actually kind of operationalized is more of a kind of administrative thing where. Um, you know, so the zoning kind of gives. Staff and the developer the direction to say like. You're asking for the 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 maximum local preference. Um, it's up to the state to give it to us or not. Um, but what our local zoning can do is is give the directive to kind of ask for it.
So can I just ask, uh, if this language um, covers the offsite? So under um, section L affordability requirements. Um. It, under. Number five development standards, it says affordable units shall be integrated with the rest of the development. And should be compatible in design appearance, construction and quality of extra and interim materials with the other units and. And or lots. And B, they should be dispersed throughout the development. And then it goes on. So it, to me, that seems like it's saying that they have to be on site, but I, you know, maybe you'd want to see. If you think, if you think there's some loophole there, but that seems to be to cover that. I didn't see in there anything about the local preference, but.
Where are you reading from, Cheryl?
Um, I'm reading from the warrant, but it's um. Section, it's part.
L.
Yeah, it's part of the the general development, or it follows the general development standards, so it's section L. If you look at the warrant, it's page thirty two.
Yeah, so we should look over those to make sure that they. Correspond.
I I thi- I think, I think there's an implication there, Cheryl, but if the board is inter, I mean, and and again, we'll double check if that's allowed. I I can't imagine it wouldn't be. Um, if if you want the units to be on site, you should be, we should just be explicit about it and say we want them on site, so there's no question. Um, you know, ditto for the for the local preference. Again, like, you know, we um. In in a lot of cases, the zoning has mentioned it, so that's why we've done it. Um, but, you know, we we kind of understand that there's a general desire for as much local preferences we'll be allowed to get. And so we've done that, you know, it's, you you you. And so we've done that, you know, it's, you submit a letter to the state at the sort of the lottery process when they're reviewing the marketing plan, and that's kind of how they give the instruction to the lottery agent. But we'll, we'll double check and make sure that that can be an element of the zoning.
Great. Okay. All right. So that's exciting. We'll look forward to discussing that further next week. And as soon as you have that ready, Tim, that would be great. We can have a chance to look at it and shoot you questions if we, if we need to. So next, if we want to move to discussion on site plan approval. Tim, I don't want to put you on the spot. I didn't mention this earlier. But do you have any sense of what a consultant would cost to do a, to amend our site plan approval? And, and, you know, without putting you on the spot, maybe that's something that you could reach out to Karis North if the rest of the board felt that that's something that we wanted to take a look at? And just give a general idea without making a commitment.
Yeah, I, I'm on the spot and the spot is, I don't know. But I think, I think talking to Karis about it, you know, she's, she's in town council's office. She has, she has experience with this and kind of getting her advice on kind of how to do that. You know, would probably be a good idea, you know, site plan approval is, there's a lot of different varieties out there, you know, that we can kind of take, take a cue from. So we can, we can, we can take it for a step and kind of talk to Karis and kind of see, you know, what she would recommend is kind of a path forward for developing that. And if it, it means kind of going out and getting another planning consultant, or if, you know, we can kind of, you know, create, you know, based on some, some good examples, kind of a menu of different things that we'd want to see. You know, she could probably provide a great deal of help there. So we'll, we'll initiate that conversation, maybe not have an update for next week, but definitely soon.
Can I make a request that she review section M in the article one, which is three pages long on site plan and design review? And I had, in making the proposed edits that I had submitted to Tim that were included in, in article one, I had attended a webinar that Judy Barrett and an attorney from KP Law had done specifically on site plan approval with MBTA communities. And, and I looked at other communities' site plan time review requirements. So I would like for her to at least take a look at these as a starting point. Because there, there was a fair amount of work that went into them and a fair amount of research. And so that would be my request.
And I think that's where having maybe Karis or whoever the consultant is to come and join us and explain. And I'll just throw Lexington again, because Cheryl, when you were reading their article and you were talking about how they weren't very specific in some of their site plan approval that was in their article, they actually have a very, very detailed site plan approval bylaw, which is separate. So it would be really interesting to see how much, if you, if you have a very specific site plan approval process already in place, you might not need to put as much into your article for MBTA zoning, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that's what Lexington probably did. They were probably more general in what was in their article. But if you look at their site plan approval process in town, it's incredibly specific.
So Meredith, if you, if you have it, if you could send it, because I reviewed their MBTA zoning and all it does is refer to it, a particular section. I read that section too, and it did not have any submission requirements in it. We have submission requirements A through M in terms of what we, a developer needs to submit. And frankly, that list is based on my years of experience on the planning board and feeling as if our current site plan review requirements were deficient.
Right, right.
And we kept asking for things that weren't in our requirements. And so I, like I said, if you could circulate what, what you found in Lexington.
Yeah, because it's very specific on what their submission process is. So that's where I was, you know, I was a little confused when you were saying they didn't have a lot of detail. But, and again, that's where maybe we need clarification on how much needs to go into the MBTA. But I think having it for all projects just makes sense. And so this is sort of the time to clean house and do both at the same time. So, yes, so, Tim or Josh, would you be able to pull an example that their site plan approval process and circulate that to the board? When you have a chance, not today.
So, so Tim, do most towns have a more robust site plan approval process? And ours is just sort of deficient? Is that how most towns are going?
I think that, without having seen every town's site plan approval provisions, you know, I, I, I think if you look at ours and kind of think about, and I don't know when those provisions kind of went in, and you have to understand that site plan approval is just an invention of towns and case law. So there's no playbook. But like, if you look at ours, the triggers for site plan approval are a multifamily building, which is by and large not allowed in the town. And, you know, 800 or more square feet of commercial construction, you know, our commercial districts are, you know, tiny. And so, you know, the, the, the point of site plan approval is, you know, we have subdivision rules. If we have a special permit, it's based on zoning that has all sorts of different provisions that have been baked in. And everything else is kind of just governed by the building code. And, you know, site plan approval is meant to be about stuff that, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want to just plop on the building inspector's desk. You know, there's more impact. It's an unusual project in some way that kind of needs a little bit more review insight from the planning board. And so for the longest time, we, we didn't really have many of those projects. And so the provisions that we have, you know, kind of did the trick. You know, we're in a world now where there's a lot more development pressure in town. People want to do all sorts of different other things in town. And you get the sort of the Frankenstein process that we've created where, you know, 440 Granite Ave or 50 Elliot Street or the Red House on Adam Street, you know, where Elliot Physical Therapy is, where, you know, we don't have zoning for this thing, but we all think it's probably reasonable. But you've got to get a variance to get your zoning relief, and you've got to do site plan approval because it's got the triggers. So I think, you know, if you kind of look forward and say like, okay, we're, we're going to have a certain type of development in town now, you should be tailoring those provisions of review based on, you know, what do you think needs to be reviewed on these projects? You know, and so I think that's where there are other towns that are a little bit more aggressive about commercial development, multifamily development, that have more robust provisions, because they're seeing these projects, they're anticipating these projects, and they're kind of learning from them in that way. So long way of answering your question, I'm almost certain that other towns have more robust and detailed processes. And it's not about like, how do we put these projects through the wringer? It's about like, look, we care about design. We should have some design requirements. You know, things that we care about, things that are important, impacts that we anticipate based on, you know, where we think development's going to happen, you start to tailor those provisions towards that.
I would also say that site plan review, we've come into it with the Dover amendment uses of the childcare facilities, at least I think three of those that we've reviewed, where we felt as if we didn't have a lot to go on, right? So, and the, the other ones, as Tim said, are the ones where they require zoning relief as well as site plan review. And the other thing we always wrestle with, well, site plan review is supposed to be used for projects that are as of right, so that they, you don't necessarily say no, for the most part. I mean, that's the way town council has advised in the past. So that's where it's guiding the design, right? But also making sure that the impacts are managed to the extent that they can be. Otherwise, I suppose the project wouldn't get approval. But that's where the shadow studies, being explicit about shadow studies and topographic plans. And like right now, we just require certain things like photometric plans, but we don't require renderings. And, you know, just all sorts of crazy things.
Besides the trees and plant material.
Or as I like to say, Maggie, that the landscape plan be developed by a licensed landscape architect or at least not a civil engineer. So, in any case.
That's great. And Cheryl, I do want to say you, you did a lot of great, you put a lot of great work into that, what we currently have. We just want to make sure that what we have is our zoning, that our, our site plan approval process matches up with what we have.
Oh, I support having, yeah, I support having the improvement to the overall requirement in the code, Meredith, no problem.
So, and I think Karis has, that's sort of been her focus, working with other communities. So that's why I just mentioned, and she has a wonderful reputation that, Tim, that would be a good place to start. So if you could, I don't want to put too much on, but if you could maybe connect and have an update for us also, maybe at next week's meeting possibly, in just a sense of not only cost, but is that something that we could have an article amending our current site plan approval process ready for Maytown meeting?
Site plan review and site plan approval, that's a term used interchangeably, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Because I think that's something regardless of what happens on the vote on the 13th. Those are things that we, both of these are, we need to move forward with, so. Does that sound good?
It does. In terms of like managing expectations on a timeline for that, what's the, what's a reasonable timeline for getting through that? And having, having something, you know, prepared that could be an article?
I think, you know, if we had a couple of examples, site plan approval process, those are not nearly as lengthy as some of our other articles. So I think there is sort of a general template, which Cheryl alluded to, and it's a matter of just sort of, you know, tailoring it to, to the needs of what we would see necessary in Milton. But it seems like, Tim, I, and again, I don't know if Karis is really busy right now. I don't know if she's even available or other consultants, but the length of that process, I would, because we would want for her to really walk us through.
Yeah, I mean, I think as always, if you can do it, you know, relatively in-house, you know, and obviously, you know, Karis has her own workload, she's town council for other communities, but you know, she's, she's in the office. You know, that's a little bit more of a direct route than having to procure that out. So, you know, if that's, if that's something where, you know, we can figure out a, a plan for kind of working with town council's office on this, I think we'd want to do that. So we'll, I'll have something for you next week. We'll initiate that conversation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. And so I think that, you know, those two items were really sort of the big agenda item, agenda items for tonight. Cheryl, we can certainly put on discussion for next week. Or I don't know if the board would like to discuss that at this time. Or I feel like we did not really have that agenda item on for tonight, so.
The, the, I'm sorry, the discussion.
If we wanted to have a formal position, if we wanted to take a formal position.
I would like to have that on the agenda for next week. I think it's important for residents to know.
I think that's fine.
Sorry, I have a couple just follow up questions from last week when we talked about RKG submitting their final, their final analysis. I had asked if they were going to fix some of their starting assumptions. A couple of their starting assumptions were incorrect. So I just wanted to make sure that they, they were either corrected or noted. So I went back to, to find out what those incorrect assumptions were. And one was the total households. So RKG in their report stated that it was 9,235, and the state stated there was 9,844. And then the other incorrect assumption was the full build out analysis, where RKG reported that it would be 2,586, and UTIL reported it would be 2,625. So I know it's not like a huge difference, but I just was wondering if Eric had a chance to fix those and if, if there were any changes in his analysis, would we be provided the final documentation of that?
Maggie, can you, can you repeat the household numbers?
Yeah. I have it as RKG is 9,235. And the state has it as 9,844.
When you, when you say the state, where, where, where does that come from?
Oh, off their website, you know, how they told us we had to do 25% of 9,000 HLC.
Yeah.
So, and I think Eric explained that he used, he used the 2020, I think, census to get his number. He wasn't sure how the state determined their numbers. So I don't know if UTIL used the state's number.
Yeah, so, so, and we can, you know, I can, I can kind of pass that question along to him. The, 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 the state number and the household number are actually two different things. The, the state number, 9,844, is year round housing units. So these are housing units that are occupied year round. It's, I'm having a tough time wrapping my head around it a little bit, but that's a different number than households, which is a, both of these are census derived numbers. But what they're basically doing is any kind of occupiable housing unit that, that is, you know, tends to be occupied year round is, is in that state number, and that's kind of where our SHI number comes from. That's a function of all of that. The household number is occupied housing units in a given census kind of recording. And, you know, they do the decennial, they also do, you know, yearly surveys that are kind of aggregated to five year estimates. The reason that RKG, and we can get Eric to kind of, you know, confirm this. The reason that RKG uses households is when you're talking about the municipal impacts of housing, it's not the, the physical housing unit that is the impact, which is what is in the state number. It's the people that live inside of it. Those are the ones that are going to school, calling the police, flushing the toilet, you know, all of that. And so you, both of those numbers can be kind of correct simultaneously. That there are 9,844 housing units in the town of Milton, but that there are also 902,035 households. I will, I will ask him to kind of clarify the, kind of the interplay between those two numbers. But I think that's a little bit of, of kind of what you're getting at is when you're doing that, you know, analysis of municipal impacts, you care about the households that are living in the units more than you care about the actual number of, of units. Because, you know, but again, you know, those numbers are different enough that I think it warrants an explanation. And then again, I'll.
We have like 600 or so vacant units in town? Is that what the differences?
We'll, we'll get an explanation of kind of what the relationship between those numbers are. I don't, I don't want to get over my skis on that, you know, because again, the year round housing unit number is a reflection of, you know, units that are kind of lived in throughout the year. So I, I don't know if it takes into account, you know, second homes or vacation rentals or, you know, short term rentals or things like that. But, but there's a difference between those numbers. We'll want to get an explanation for what the difference is. I just, I just wanted to kind of, kind of get after why would you, you would use households and not just sort of the, the, the year round housing unit number. And then again, on, on the build out analysis, that is a reflection of, you know, when we kind of let RKG loose on their analysis, they were using a certain version of the sub districts that, that we had had. That, that, that continued to be iterated upon, you know, before we got to town meeting. So that probably is an explanation of the difference between those unit capacity numbers. So we'll also, we can, we can ask RKG, you know, if it would be a lift to, to basically, you know, update the analysis based on, you know, article one, you know, effectively. You know, Sean had this question last week. There is. There is, on RKG's contract, there is some budget remaining. I think we've gotten our last, you know, technically our last invoice from them. So there is $6,750 left on their contract. So I think if we had kind of additional asks or if we wanted, you know, Eric to come by, I already shot him an email to see if he'd be available at a future meeting to come by and just do a kind of, you know, final debrief on this now that people have had a chance to sit with his report. So there's money for that. It's just a matter of getting on the schedule and, you know, if there are additional kind of cleanup tasks that the board would like him to do, you know, we can certainly talk about that as well.
And just as a side note, does Milton allow short-term rentals?
Yes and no. There, we don't have, we don't have a bylaw allowing or disallowing them. We have a bylaw that says that you can, you can rent rooms in your house for up to three boarders. And this is something we've had for a million years. And so that's kind of how the building inspector in the past has kind of gone after some of the more problematic short-term rental houses where we know for a fact that there are four people boarding in this house and they're causing a problem. And so that's been the mechanism. It's been effective in its way, but also, you know, probably not as effective as maybe a kind of a purpose-built bylaw around short-term rentals.
Tim, we must, we must pay RKG on an hourly basis. Am I right in saying that? That remaining $6,000 could be, it sounds like he's got a lot of hours left there for us to be able to have some further conversation.
Yeah, I think that would be the case. I don't know what the exact breakdown is, but, yeah, they came in, they came in under budget on this one. So we've got some money to play with. I don't, you know, there may need to be a slight amendment to the contract, but I think he'd probably be game to kind of do some cleanup work.
Meredith, I do think inviting Eric back to a future meeting would be helpful. As we all probably remember, we got this just before, you know, town meeting and really had no time for, for review, for our own review, and to then have a conversation. I will, I do have a number of questions. I'll be prepared if we have Eric attend the meeting.
Great, that might be a good idea, Tim, if, if we think he would be able to come back and just answer some, some general questions that we just didn't have a chance to follow up on prior to town meeting.
I've got a query out to him. I'm sure we can probably figure something out. So, once I hear back from him, I'll let you guys know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just before I forget, I also, you know, when we were talking about the site plan approval, Josh and I mentioned Lexington. I also reviewed Brookline and Newton, which also have a very good site, site plan review process. If it wouldn't be too much to circulate all three of those, I think that would be really helpful for the boards to see sort of a gold standard of what we should be trying to put forth. So, that would be great, if that's not too much. And then also, we can look at, once we've done that, we can look at what is in their MBTA zoning for site plan approval and how that correlates to what they have for the town, so.
Which towns, Meredith?
Brookline, Newton, and Lexington. I think we're three good ones.
And just another follow-up, and, you know, just to make sure we get the answer to it. At our last meeting, I brought it up that there's a lot of talk about the two-year delay. And so I had asked, you know, what the discrepancy was when Peter Mello said at the October 23rd meeting that according to Section 16, there are ways to circumvent the two-year prohibition. So I kind of wanted to know like what that meant when he said that last October. And also, I had asked about the, when a zoning bylaw is passed by a two-thirds vote, then is that a two-year wait? But if the zoning is only, has a 50% requirement, is there no delay? So again, I don't need that answered right now, Tim, but.
Yeah, I, I'll, I had that on my list of notes. I didn't, I didn't get to it, but I will, I'll put it at the top of the list because I'll have to have a conversation with him about some other things. So, but again, what I suspect, and, you know, there are elements of this in his memo that, you know, and it's still, you know, if you read that memo, there's a little bit of uncertainty as to, you know, because there's not a lot of case law here. But, you know, if the planning board recommends an article after having not recommended it, you know, does that count or not count? And then what, you know, the extent to, what sort of changes do you need to make to a bylaw that constitutes substantial changes? You know, is kind of, you know, a potential workaround. But it is a little bit of uncharted territory, but we'll get some clarity on both of those questions.
Yeah, because I know there's, all case law is up for interpretation. And I noted, you know, he, that there is, he said there's relatively scant case law exists to precisely to define the standard. So I just, as I said last week, I want to make sure that facts, proper facts are being out there. And I'm not sure if they are being out there. I think there's a lot of speculation. And again, I talked to Tim about this too. People are also saying that, oh, the state's going to come in and zone us if we vote one way or the other. And as Tim said, that's speculation. There's no facts about that. There's no case law to reference. So before anybody starts quoting or releasing information, I just want the facts to be out there. And I just don't think we have them all at this moment in time. Not that I need them, Tim, from you tonight, but I think at some point it would be nice to get.
Can I just add one thing to what you said there, Maggie? Is Brookline Town Council, I think, has issued a letter to the Brookline, probably Select Board or Plenary Board, I'm not sure which, outlining the risk of non-compliance. And that's, in that letter, that Town Council references a remedy of a judge-imposed district. So, because this MBTA law is also new, there hasn't been one of these requirements before. I don't think there's going to be certitude, if that's the right word, about, about that. And as Town Council noted, there isn't case law on, except for one case, on substantially different. So in terms of what's fact or not, I think we just have to assess the risk, right? So that's the why I said early on in the meeting that there's risk associated with being non-compliant and not knowing whether, what actions might be taken in terms of legal by the AG. We know enforcement, but what does enforcement look like? We don't have certainty on, and we don't have certainty on what's substantially different enough. And no matter how much we ask them, I don't think we're going to get it.
And to your point about Brookline, I did read that and, you know, and on page three, their Town Council, and I quote, said, additionally, since the act is intended to assist low-income residents and protected classes, our non-compliance would be painted as an incidental choice that disproportionately impacts such individuals. But I think that's an incorrect statement on their Town Council's part. This act is specifically not intended to be an affordable housing initiative. So I think that Brookline's Town Council has been a little inconsistent in what he's saying as well.
Thank you. Well, and just to end, you know, this evening, I, the interpretation of the letter that came in last night, I felt was very, in a way, very positive in the fact that the state wants to work with us. And I think that we have said all along that we are working towards compliance. We are trying to put the best article forth for the residents of Milton. But we certainly are not looking to not be compliant. And I think that the state very much would like to work with us. And I hope we can continue to do that moving forward, so. Any other comments, Tim, before we adjourn for the evening?
Plenty of, plenty of stuff to do, so we'll get cracking on that.
Good, well, I feel like those are two really, you know, two good areas that we can focus and at least have, probably have those to move forward for Maytown meeting, if it's appropriate. Okay. Any other comments, anything else from the board?
No. I appreciate a shorter meeting than normal. Thank you so much, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Great.
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
And roll call, since we are all remote. Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all, good evening.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, guys, great meeting.
Good night.
Okay, bye.